Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll?
Stottherd.
President.
Thompson.
Here.
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Tom Mulligan.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and the American Republic and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment to just reflect on what is going on in Japan and the challenges that that country faces as well as the people with the terrible earthquake and the tsunami. The good news is, is that Omaha's sister cities, Shizuoka did not sustain any damage. But having said that, there are many, many people that are suffering in Japan today. I think we need to give them a lot of time for their rest. Please do this, ma'am.
City Clerk certifies publication of daily record on March 11th, known as pre-council or regular city council meeting. March 15th, 2011, a current copy of the Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on the East Wall legislative chambers.
If you have a cellphone or pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate, please. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Item five is Resolution, City Council and the Mayor of City of Omaha on behalf of the citizens of Omaha to hereby honor the memory of Richard T. Ketchy for his service to the City of Omaha and Douglas County and further that a copy of this resolution be sent to the family of Richard T. Ketchy.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mrs. Stottherd, would you be so kind to read the resolution?
You bet. Resolved by the City Council of the City of Omaha, whereas Richard T. Ketchy served the City of Omaha for 16 years as an elected City Council member from 1973 to 1981 and 1985 to 1997, as well as Douglas County as Register of Deeds from 1996 to 2004. He also served on the Learning Community Council from 2008 to 2010. And whereas Richard T. Ketchy had two children, son Larry, who attends the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, and daughter Victoria, a student at the University of Nebraska, Omaha. And whereas Richard T. Ketchy was very active in the Omaha Sister City Association and instrumental in establishing the First Sister City Association with Shizuoka, Japan. And whereas Richard T. Ketchy was born in Pocatello, Idaho, and came to Omaha as a toddler with his parents, who started a watch and jewelry business. And whereas Richard T. Ketchy graduated from Omaha Technical High School in 1955 and the University of Nebraska at Omaha in 1959. And whereas Richard T. Ketchy served the public with honesty, integrity, and a sincere desire to help deal with their government. And whereas Richard T. Ketchy was a kind, attentive, and helpful person. And whereas we extend our deepest sympathy to the T. Ketchy family.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you, Richard, for your service.
Mr. President, we will bring up item number 56.
Fine.
Which is a resolution, 56 Resolution to Omaha Convention and Visitor Bureau is authorized to purchase a corporate sponsorship with ASAE, the Center for Association Leadership, to promote Omaha as a convention designation. Destination. We need to have a public hearing on that.
Public hearing on item number 56 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Dana Markle. I'm Executive Director of the Omaha Convention Visitor Bureau. What this resolution asks of you is basically to renew a partnership which we began last year. We just, this month will conclude a one-year sponsorship partnership with ASAE, which is the largest association of meeting planners in the world. It represents over 11,000 associations, with many of those associations having potential convention business for Omaha. I'll tell you, the membership has more than paid for itself 12 months in. We've booked three conventions just in the last year, and this is for future business and revenue for the city. What is significant about this partnership is it puts us in a very exclusive club. We will be on the same stage with large convention destinations because the partnership is limited. We were invited to participate, and the other cities participating, once again, in this limited partnership are Fort Lauderdale, Dallas, Baltimore, Salt Lake City, Atlanta, Toronto, and the State of Washington. So it puts us in a pretty big league, and it has most definitely opened doors for us. Just two weeks ago, we had a sales manager in Chicago who was wanting to meet with a convention planner, and once this association learned that we were a partner, the doors opened up, and she got a meeting right away. We ask for your support in this resolution so we can continue putting Omaha on the map. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Dana? I'd just like, if you could, in the return on investment information that you were providing, I think you said you had directly translated into three conventions booked. And could you, just as far as this return on investment goes, just take a second to educate us on translating that into a number of hotel rooms booked, so that we can have a little better picture.
Okay. Dana Markle. Yes, three conventions, and it's a little over 5,400 room nights booked. Now, if you take 5,400 rooms times, let's say conservatively, $100 a night, and that's $540,000 just in hotel room revenue. That does not account for the restaurant, the transportation, the entertainment dollars that come along with that. So it is significant. When I said we paid for the membership in the first year, I mean we've done this about fivefold.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dana, I understand you've got a couple of visitors from Western Nebraska that are also here to help you with this project, and I'd like to acknowledge Michael and his wife, Linda Kesselring from Crawford, Nebraska. If you two would stand up for a moment. Welcome to Omaha. Please enjoy your visit, and thank you for your help.
May I make a comment to Paul?
Certainly.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for that recognition. This is such a significant visit. This is Western Tourism Coalition coming to Omaha in efforts to bridge the gap between East and West Nebraska. Our focus is specifically on tourism issues and bringing new revenue to the state of Nebraska through tourism. We think we have much to offer, and I can't thank the Kesselrings enough for making this effort. And thank you for the opportunity to recognize that.
Dana?
I tried to get away.
I know. Oh, you've got a meeting. Go ahead.
No, no, please. I want to answer your question.
I just care on our map pins. Are you going to bring that back, or is that going to be a continuous program that...
You know, thank you for asking, and actually, they are still up. It was to be a two-year program four years ago, but the attractions that have the pins have unanimously asked us to keep the pins up. So we still have the map, and it's still very vital to our message.
That's good. Glad to hear that. Thank you. For those who don't know what we're talking about, if you ever drive around the city at various attractions, you see those big blue pins sticking in the ground. Okay, maybe not. Mrs. Stottherd?
Thank you, Dana. I'm sorry. Just one more.
We should have a little light.
No, this is great. Thank you. No, just one more question that I think is important for you to talk about just a little bit, is the way that we will be financing this purchase.
Yes. All of our efforts at the Convention Visitor Bureau are funded by a lodging tax. No general fund monies will be used for this sponsorship or promotion.
And the lodging tax has to be used for...
It's a specific promotion lodging tax. It's 2% of every hotel room occupied, and it's mandated through state statute.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Now, back to the item six. Orders to rezone property located 4902, 4904, and 4906 Underwood Avenue from R8 to NBD Neighborhood Business District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number six begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name's Tom McClay. 5116 California Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here on behalf of the rezoning for 4902, 4904, and 4906 Underwood. As you will note in the City Planning Department's recommendation, they do recommend the rezoning of this property. The overlay district, the NCE that came and was put in place, did contemplate that these would be a mixed-use, future mixed-use. Currently, our plans for the property are to develop the two residential homes in kind of a model, if you're familiar with the area, of a mixed-use where the basement would be utilized as commercial space, with the upper floors still utilized as a residence, a rental residence. The lot that's currently 4902 would be subsequently developed as we further develop the two other lots. At this moment, we don't have definitive plans for that, but it would hopefully all be developed in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I would just comment on my support for this proposal as well. I talked about it last week with many of you. It is consistent, as Mr. McClay indicated, with our plans for the downtown business district. And although there's not an immediate project happening here as a result of this rezoning, it will be helpful to that eventual outcome, so I'm supportive, and I would move approval.
Did you want to speak, sir, in regards to item number six? I know your hands are full with...
Come on down if you're going to do it.
Come on down.
State your name and whether you're...
My name's Brian Barnes. I live at 708 North 49th Street. We're just concerned if it goes commercial, how many people are going to be there? Because right now, with everything that's in Dundee, we get a lot of overflow from the bars and stuff. We get people with beer cans, bottles in our yard, urination in our yards. So we're just trying to make sure there's not any more bars going in. Also, with, there's not enough parking in that area. So I'm just wondering how much parking is going to be involved there?
Okay.
Because right now, with that OHA building there, that lot gets full, they fill it out in the streets. There's another couple apartment buildings, if they get full, they come out in the streets, so everybody's parked in front of our house, leaving litter everywhere. So we're just wondering, if they're going to be putting more commercial in, is there going to be parking for everybody?
Okay. Well, they'll get you the answer to those questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Festerson, if you would, please.
Thanks. I can take a crack at that question if you'd like, and maybe Mr. McClay can as well. But I think the idea, the eventual idea on these properties through this rezoning is a mixed-use project, much like you see at Harvest Bread. So it wouldn't be additional restaurants or bars necessarily going in there, but to be determined. And as far as the parking goes, that is something we're very mindful of as we're talking about this Dundee renovation, a $2.5 million renovation in 2013 at this point. And if we succeed in implementing that plan, that would increase parking by 20% in the Dundee Business District and in this immediate area, this very corner. So I think that'd be helpful as well, should this come to fruition. But Mr. McClay, if you want to take a crack at answering that question, too?
Sure. I myself live at 5116 California Street, which is just five houses down from the Dundee Commercial District. With the addition of some of the restaurants, we have seen parking on the streets, parking in front of my home. However, I think that's part of the Dundee Commercial District. If it's going to continue to be a viable district, it needs to add to that commercial nature of it as the NCE that they proposed and looking to make it an expanded commercial district with expanded parking will be more beneficial to the entire neighborhood. As Mr. Festerson indicated, our current plans are to remodel it into the Great Harvest concept, which would be a smaller retail space, to have the angled parking in front, which hopefully be utilizing it. We don't have definitive plans on exactly how that will transpire. We are the developers. We're not developing, we're developing it as a retail use, not to be used by ourselves, but to somewhere we would rent it out to. We are obviously, I am obviously very sensitive to the nature of Dundee being a resident, a lifelong resident, as a matter of fact, and the development of it. I think this is a good development. I think it enhances the area. The houses, when we purchased them, were really in disarray. We've attempted to improve the homes themselves and Dundee as a whole to improve. I hope that answers your questions. I don't have a definitive answer on how to rectify all the parking problems that might be in Dundee, but I think that's the goal for the Planning Department and the neighborhood itself.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Could I say something?
All right. I will call you up under...
My name's Deb Hickman. I'm currently a member of the Dundee Community Garden, which is on the corner lot. At one point, we were told the planning commission was designating this a permanent green spot, which Dundee has very little of. And we just heard about this yesterday, so we are wondering what's going on with that corner lot. We are leasing from Lawrence Development Company right now, but we're really concerned that there's not going to be any green space left in Dundee. And we've gotten so much great feedback from neighbors. It's not a park, but they use it and enjoy it and treat it as a park. You know, people walking through. I'd like to see it stay a green space. I know everybody wants more commercial, but there's not going to be any left in the Dundee area if this happens. So I'm just speaking as a community member. I don't have any power over the property or anything else, but I think the community will really miss that area if it's turned commercial. It sounds like possibly a parking lot, which I know most community members would not want. So at least one voice is heard because this was all a surprise to all of us that this came up. Our information was that it was going to stay green. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I think I can answer that question as well, and I appreciate that comment because I'm very supportive of the Community Garden there. I think it's done great things for that corner, and I agree with you about the green spaces. And so when I saw this came up, I did contact Mr. McClay and Mr. James as well. And although their long-term plan for those three lots may be different, it's not different at the moment. This is purely just the rezoning on that possibility. And in fact, I asked Mr. James directly, would this impact the Community Garden now? And his comment is no. He has no immediate plans to change how that's currently used. And as for the long term, I suppose that's a question to inquire with him about because ultimately, it is his property, and he would, you know, obviously have the property rights there in terms of rezoning or not rezoning, or keeping it green or not keeping it green. But I think certainly for now, that's his intention, and that was his response to me.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed, seven to zero. Item number seven, orders to amend section 5546 and 764 of the Omaha Civil Code regarding daycare services. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number seven begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, agenda items eight through 10 should be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Item number 11 is resiliance permanent platent titled Irvington Place Replat located at 142 King Plaza, along with attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plot is authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. 12 is the replat transmitted herewith entitled Irvington Place Replat is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on items number 11 and 12 begin now. Are there any proponents?
I'm Joe Dotlove, so I'm here from Thompson, Rees &amp; Dornier. Just here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 13, resiliance permanent platent titled Pfeffer's Edition located at 13412 North 147th Street, along with attached conditions hereby accepted and preparation of final plot of this subdivision is hereby authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, councilmembers. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street in Omaha. Request for approval of the Pfeiffer Edition on about North 47th Street located in the North Hills Environmental District. We're basically splitting off five acres for the current property owner and her son to build a home. We are within the North Hills, and we're meeting all those requirements in terms of grading and disturbance and those things. There's no public improvements for this. We'll meet all the state of Nebraska requirements for septic and wells, and we were under conditional approval, which was approved by a planning commission, and we agreed to those conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Liquor, item number 14, Oasis Hookah Bar, 315 South 16th Street, Class C liquor license application, new location. We were requesting a one-week layover and continuing the public hearing so we can do the proper notification.
Second. Lights, roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Slated over one week, seven to zero. We'll take items 15 and 16 together. It's the same application for two different licenses, the same location. Attitude on Food, 2405 N Street, a package liquor license application, new location, and they're asking for catering at that same applicant for the same location.
Public hearing on items 15 and 16 begin now. Are there any proponents?
I'm Melissa Tippin, Director of Operations for Attitude on Food Catering. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about our liquor license application.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. We have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Stottherd.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Both adopted, seven to zero. We'll take items 17 and 18, or two Keno locations. 17 is resolution that EHPV Lottery Services has granted approval to operate a Big Red Satellite Keno location at the Eagles Fraternal Order at 6607 Sunshine Drive, A's Communications opposing. And 18 is Big Red at Joby C Midtown Tavern, 2514 Lebonore Street.
Public hearing on items 17 and 18 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard, and we are all here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Yeah, there's one back here.
Come forward.
My name is Jereen Wegner, and I'm opposing Resolution number 17. I'm a property owner on the 42nd and Drexel address of that particular property where the Eagles are applying for liquor license, or excuse me, a beer garden and red Keno license is essentially a single commercial property that's surrounded in a residential area. There are primarily single-family dwellings, a couple of duplexes, and also joyful noise preschool and daycare that are located surrounding that area. And I'm afraid that the property values and the family nature of the neighborhood will not be in character with the institution of the Big Red Keno and Beer Garden located at that location. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Costello, would you come forward and just give your name?
David Costello, a member of the Board of Trustees for the South Omaha Eagles Area 154.
You heard the opposition. Would you care to respond?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers, the Fraternal Order of Eagles has been in existence for over 114 years. Our particular area, I believe we celebrate our 108th anniversary. We moved from 2226 N Street to our current location at 6607 Sunshine Drive. As to property values in the area going down because we're there, that building, prior to our purchasing and renovation of that building, was assessed at about $300,000. That building is now assessed in excess of $800,000. We are not hurting the property values of the area. We have no intention of ever hurting the property values of the area. We welcome all the neighbors to please come down. We will have a grand opening the last weekend of April where the entire area will be invited, as will all the council members, if you would care to come down and see what we're about, to show off our building. We're very proud of our building. We have a very controlled crowd. Parking right now is a premium. Our lot is not holding all the people that are coming down for meals, charities, et cetera. Our primary business, our primary function is not a bar. Our primary function is a family club. We do serve alcohol. We do serve food. But it's more a family, we try to encourage a family atmosphere rather than a bar-type atmosphere. People come to our club in order to relax. Young married people can bring their children. Children are always welcome. We have video games just for the children, along with some video games, for instance, at the bar for the adults. Our prices as a nonprofit organization are slightly lower than your average bar.[1710.04] Our prices as a nonprofit organization are slightly lower than your average bar. We're trying to work within the community. We currently sponsor, partially sponsor, a race car at I-80 Speedway. The young man who owns and drives that race car lives three blocks from our area. We have committed to sponsor a Little League baseball team at 60th and Harrison in order to get involved in the community. Our primary competitor is Darby's, and prior to our opening, the owner of Darby's joined our club. We are a private club. We do not experience the problems that public bars experience. I personally have been a member for 12 years. Most of the time, I've been on the Board of Trustees, which is a job much like yours to where I'm charged with the responsibility of money and conduct without notice. I'm a worker bee. I'm not the president. I'm not the vice president. I don't want an honorary position. I hold a position where I can actually make a difference. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions that any of you have, and if any of you, especially Mr. Garnant, are contacted by someone in the neighborhood, please feel free to forward their questions, concerns, or complaints to us, and we will personally answer them. Keno is just something for our daytime business primarily. Our business has far exceeded our expectations from when we were at 22nd and N Street. The Beer Garden is more, I realize this isn't the hearing for the Beer Garden. I messed that up, or it would have been. I forgot to put an "in" at the top of the map. But the Beer Garden is a consideration for our smoking members, of which we have quite a few. There will never be music dedicated to the Beer Garden. The most that might happen in that Beer Garden, as far as noise goes, would be a Saturday in the fall with a Nebraska game. So concerns, I would really like to hear them from anyone that contacts you so that we can handle them, so that we don't, at our next hearing in two weeks for our Beer Garden, then perhaps we can have them resolved before we meet with you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katrina, could you come back up? You've been doing this for a long time. And just for the record, I know that you have been asked on more than one occasion, the addition to Keno to a licensed liquor establishment, that would it be accurate to say that with the addition of Keno, there has been no evidence whatsoever that it attributes to the decline of property values and the increase of crime?
Katrina Coffey, 11248 John Galt Boulevard, you're absolutely correct. I've been working for Big Red Keno for almost 18 years now, and it has, I have never seen in those 18 years, it reduce property values or increases crime. Basically, what Keno does is it's kind of like having pool tables or dart machines in each of the facilities. It's just providing additional entertainment for those customers that are already there. Keeps them there and so they can just have more fun.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second, no further lights. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 19 is Big Red Keno for the Coliseum Ultra Lounge at 17525 Gold Plaza. There's a request to withdraw this application.
Second. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's withdrawn, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Remember, the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item removed, consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 20 through 22 were held on March the 8th. Do we have a motion? Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 23 through 37 begin now. 23 through 37. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Ordinance on final reading, item number 38, ordinance approving attached agreement between the City of Omaha and Heartland Workforce Solutions for leased space at the Blue Lion Center, 242123 North 24th Street.
Public hearing was held on March the 8th. Do we have a motion? Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And now item 39 is an ordinance proving agreement between the City and Heartland Workforce Solutions, which will provide delivery of Title I Adult Dislocated Workers and Youth Services in the Tri-County Workforce Investment Area for a term of five years. A is an amendment.
Public hearing was held on March the 8th. Do we have a motion on the amendment? Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 40 through 44 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading, planning board attachments, item 45, ordinance vacating a triangular portion of Chicago Street between 11th and 12th Streets adjacent to the Hilton Hotel. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend.
Public hearing on item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item number 46, ordinance to provide for a contract with Douglas County.
Retained.
I see that. To assist in payment of County's victim witness program.
Public hearing on item number 46 begins now. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Next.
Item number 48, Douglas County Election Commissioner transmits invoice for the cost of conducting the January 25, 2011 City of Omaha Mayor's, Mayorial Recall election. We need a motion to receive and refer to the finance.
Roll call.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.